Okay, we all set?
We should be all set. Um, I think maybe we'll just pull the slides up.
Yes.
Good to go.
Okay, thank you. Okay, good evening. I am calling this public hearing to order in accordance with the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, MGLC, one thirty-one, section forty, and the Boston Wetlands ordinance, Boston City Code ordinance is chapter seven dash one point four. The Boston Conservation Commission will hold a virtual public hearing this evening on September third, uh, twenty twenty-five to review the following projects to determine what conditions, if any, the commission will impose in order to protect the interests of the public and private water supply, groundwater prevention of pollution, flood control, prevention of storm damage, protection of fisheries and land containing shellfish, and protection of wildlife habitat. This evening's hearings will be followed by our regular meeting in accordance with chapter one oh seven of the Acts of twenty twenty-two. We are conducting this meeting online to ensure public access to the deliberations of the Conservation Commission. The public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. Additionally, the meeting is being recorded. If you do not wish to be recorded, please turn off your video. Members of the public may have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six dot meet yourself, or send your questions to staff via email at um, C C at Boston dot gov. Um, for the record, I am Michael Parker, Chair of the Commission. Uh, could staff please identify themselves?
I'm Anna Mary with the Environment Department.
P D Hernandez with the Environment Department.
Max Harledge with the Environment Department.
Great, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Sullivan?
John Sullivan.
Great. Commissioner Condon?
Panantir Vingadum.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Herbst?
Anne Herbst.
Okay, great. So, uh, first item on the agenda tonight is let's get this in order here. Uh, notice of notice of intent for D E P file number zero zero six, twenty sixty-four, and Boston file number twenty twenty-five dash zero two nine from Epsilon Associates Inc. on behalf of the Boston Parks and Recreation Department for the proposed reconstruction and rehabilitation of existing pathways and the installation of infiltration trenches and drainage structures throughout the Back Bay Fens to improve accessibility and site connectivity. Um, address is Back Bay Fens, one hundred Park Drive, uh, Fenway Kenmore, neighborhood of Boston, uh, resource areas or uh, bordering land subject to flooding, twenty-five foot waterfront area, twenty-five foot riverfront area, one hundred foot buffer to bordering uh, vegetated wetlands and one hundred foot buffer to inland bank. Who's here on behalf of the proponent?
That would be me, Nicole Perlot, Epsilon Associates.
Great. Is it all you tonight? Anyone else?
Um, yep. So actually, if you'll go on to our next slide, I'll introduce um, those of us from the project that are here tonight. So myself, Nicole Perlot, representing Epsilon Associates. I also have Dave Clinch on the line from Epsilon Associates. Um, we were responsible for the environmental permitting on this project. Uh, we have Kyle Zick from Kyle Zick Landscape Architecture, who did the design for the project. Uh, Matt Zeroli from Sami Otis, who did the engineering for the project. Um, and Lauren Bryant from Boston Parks and Rec, who is the proponent, the main proponent on the project. Next slide, please. Um, this slide here shows um, the project area outlined in yellow, um, this portion of the park. Um, I will skip what where work is in since we just went over that, but I would like to point out that um, this project does not involve any work in land underwater, um, which would be the muddy river that runs through the center of the park here. Um, there's also no work on inland bank and no work on B V W. So our work is in the buffer zones to those areas. It's in B L S F, riverfront area and waterfront area. The work on this project is uh, limited primarily to the public pathways um, existing on the project. It's a pathway, pathway rehabilitation project. Next slide, please. Um, summarizing the proposed park improvements that are part of this project. So uh, the primary function of this project is regrading and repaving a lot of the public pathways um, existing on the project. And that is for the purpose for making them ADA compliant. Uh, the park is not currently ADA accessible. So that's a big goal of this project. And a reason for a lot of the cut and fill in B L S F um, is part of the pathway regrading. Um, there's also going to be some installation of stormwater drainage, so infiltration trenches. Um, there's really no stormwater management on site currently. Water just sort of runs off the pave areas and sort of straight into the muddy river. Um, so the plan is to install some storm stormwater drainage and infiltration uh, to help improve some stormwater management on the site. Um, another big chunk of the project is updates to the War Memorial. Um, so currently, the War Memorial involves um, a couple sets of stairs. There's a couple sections of the War Memorial that are closed off currently, um, because the pathways are degraded and not safe. Um, and by regrading the pathways so that they're ADA compliant, um, we hope to improve the functionality of the memorial and um, restore its usability for uh, events for veterans. Um, and then as far as vegetation management for the project, there's three dead trees on site that will be removed and fifty-four new trees that will be planted. Next slide, please. Um, just a quick summary of the land ownership on the project. So there's three separate applicants to the project um, because of this. Um, so the um, Boston Parks and Rec uh, is the primary proponent on this project. They're the one leading the charge and coordinating with the other landowners, and they own uh, the primary area, this orangey area here where most of the pathways and the pathway regrading will be done. Um, but also uh, Department of Conservation and Recreation owns the area along the edge of the park, which needs to be again, connected to those ADA compliant paths. Um, and Boston Trust owns that War Memorial area in the center. Uh, next slide, please. Um, so in red on this slide are the pathways that we're proposing to repave. Um, there was an Army Corps of Engineers project about five years ago, um, that did reconstruct some of the pathways on site. So those are marked in green on this map, and so um, we're not touching those pathways as part of this project since they were redone recently. Um, but yeah, just wanted to show um, some of the new versus old parts of this project. Next slide, please. Um, and then again, it's primarily a pathway replacement project. So these orange lines here are the existing paths that we're going to be replacing. Um, there's a couple of new little pathways on there. Um, again, the purpose of the new pathways is mostly just so we can make these ADA compliant and have um, ADA compliant connections between the different paths. Um, but primarily uh, repaving existing pathways. Next slide, please. Uh, mitigation measures that are proposed for the project. Um, first of all, um, this uh, the park will be closed in phases. So um, the different areas of this project will be repaved in different sections. And um, those closures will be based on the seasonal park usage. So for example, we're not going to close the area where the gardens are, you know, in the spring. That'll probably be something that's done in the fall or winter. Um, and then the areas that are utilized by local schools won't be um, reconstructed, you know, during the school season. Um, erosion and sediment control, we have the standard best management practices, um, silt fences, hail bales, coiled logs, silt sacks, and um, at the construction exit, making sure that we're not getting, you know, uh, material on the public roadways, and then also vegetation and seeding for stabilization. Um, stormwater management, uh, we will be applying for a SWIP for this project. And then um, again, a big component of this project is the installation of some infiltration drenchers and storm drains um, to help with stormwater management, because currently there really isn't any on the project. Um, and then the um, areas in bordering land subject to flooding, um, there is cut and fill. So um, we've calculated all that to make sure that we're compensating for full inch storage, and there is more cut than fill in the end. Um, and then as far as the trees that are going to be remaining um, during the project will have protective fencing around them so that they're not damaged during construction. Next slide. Um, the last couple of slides here are just some photos of the War Memorial. Um, so just wanted to show here, as you can see, there's a couple sets of stairs as part of the memorial and some uh, cracked and degraded pathways, um, which is making it, you know, not easily accessible for veterans. Um, next slide, please. So this is the proposed rendering. Um, where basically we're taking that circular center of the War Memorial and raising it up, and then having these pathways gently slope towards um, that center so that again, they're ADA compliant and the entirety of the memorial can be accessed by everyone. Next slide. Um, and then I'd like to open it up to commissioners for any questions. Thank you.
Sure. Great, thank you. Um, I think this is the first time in, well, I might get corrected here. I think this is the first time I've seen a cut and fill plan uh, with an N O I. It's uh, very interesting. Um, and thank you for providing that. Um, when you select these areas uh, for the cuts, um, are you, I I know that there's compensatory uh, values here. Are you also thinking about things like velocities and, you know, uh, erosion? How how does that all work?
Yeah, definitely. Um, I can probably better pass that off to either um, Kyle, our architect, or um, if Matt from Sami Otis, um, if either one of you would like to, you know, they can probably better answer that question if that's all right.
Yeah, that's probably best for Matt since he's um, responsible for the stormwater drainage.
Yeah, yeah, happy to talk about it. Um, yeah, that is a good question. I think in this particular case, um, the, even though it's a quite a large site and quite um, quite significant uh, numbers, at least in terms of cubic feet of cut and fill, um, for the most part, we just looked to keep the um, the, to minimize the impact with especially the fills and kind of keep the the minimum slope possible um, so that the stormwater runoff is not um, causing erosion. We also were mindful in where we located the proposed area drains, which are the primary um, drain inlet structure that we're um, proposing, and put those in as many low points as possible and kind of use the the regrading to uh, to further that effort to get that um, stormwater into the infiltration trenches.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I am now officially out of my depth, and I'll reserve all other questions on this matter to Commissioner Sullivan. Um, I don't have any more um, questions. Eleanor, what do you have?
Thank you, Chair Parker. Uh, I didn't have anything to add to this either. Just um, wanted to note that we had conducted a site visit and um, that it was certainly helpful for us to meet the project team on site and get to see everywhere the work is occurring, but didn't have any further questions.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, on the infiltration trenches, are they taking the first inch or inch and a quarter of water, or how are they?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we uh, Sean, so Sean's looked at it once, and uh, we we had originally submitted with just the one point oh inches. But given the impact is is over a hundred square feet or a hundred thousand square feet, we we changed our calc. So the revised submission that is in uh, the commission's hands right now has um, the one point two five inch storm captured in the infiltration trenches.
Right. The uh, the area drains, they have a way to capture any silt or more importantly, leaves after the fall that, you know, build up over time. Do you capture them before it gets into the infiltration?
Yes, the uh, the area drains, I believe, have a, on our detail, it's a four, it's a four foot sump. Um, so there is a sump in the in the niloplast area drains.
Yeah, what are they, the two footers?
We we're showing four feet. Um, that that's that's actually quite quite deep, but that's that's what we have in the detail.
Oh, yeah. No, I meant um, the diameter of.
Oh, the diameter, yes. I think they're going to be essentially twenty-four inch diameter. Yep.
Yeah. The um, I I guess the next question would be for Lauren. Um, the Army Corps put some requirements after they did all their work, I believe, on the Boston parks to annually check out a whole bunch of stuff. Uh, outfalls, the depth of siltation, et cetera. Are you, are you aware of all that?
I am peripherally aware of that. Tom Timmons in our office is doing the work on that, and so I know that he's been coordinating a lot of that monitoring.
Right. So there's a bunch of outfalls into this river that dump sediment. And you know, if we're not not doing our job, either the water reservoir or D C R parks, uh, the two culprits, along with any outfalls that the parks may own. Have you made any provisions that any of us can get down to our outfalls and check them out without? You you know, we we tend to take the heaviest truck one could find on the soggiest day one could imagine so that we make sure that the tire tracks are left in the grass and everything else. Did you make any provisions to get down to all these outfalls for everybody, D C R and ourselves? Or is that just not part of the scope? We just continue to do that.
Kyle, can you jump in on that one?
Yeah, that's not part of the scope. Um, yeah.
So there's no, with with all those numerous things, how does how does the parks department check those out, Lauren? You'll have to ask Tom, I guess.
I'd have to ask Tom, yeah.
Yeah. All right, because that's a, that's an important part of what to keep this muddy river in good shape, which is the requirement that the parks department signed up for. Um, you we got to get down and inspect those outfalls. I thought they had to be done every year. And uh, I'm not sure how that's all filled out. You know, we, water reservoir was fortunate as they avoided signing the agreement. Um, and parks department put their proud John Hancock on it. So that's just something I just bring up because it's uh, very difficult. You know, it's it's a beautiful area. Um, these pathways are going to be what, eight foot wide or twelve foot wide?
It it depends where. Um, we've we've prescribed the width based on the pedestrian traffic or maintenance vehicle routes, that kind of thing.
Right. So in general, they'll be how wide, about?
Eight to twelve is the more, the the common range, yeah.
Yeah, okay. But they're not like six, as what I was, oh, okay. Yeah, I was more concerned with that. Well, um, did, was those plans submitted to the water reservoir? I mean, I heard you mention Sean, so that would be the engineer.
Yes, I think the the last set he had was uh, was April, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, okay. I was just checking. Yeah, that's all I had for comments.
Okay, thank you. Uh, before I go to Commissioner Condon, just want to remind members of the public to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself or send your questions to staff via email at C C at Boston dot gov. Commissioner Condon?
You can check, right here. Sounds like a good project. Um, I just couldn't understand fully the the scope in terms of repavement versus new path. There was a slide on that. Could we go back to that, please? Yeah, that one, thank you. So is this the entirety of all the paths, or you're leaving some out?
There are some paths we're not um, touching because they they either don't need to be redone, or they were redone as part of that Army Corps muddy river project. But the gold color are ones where that exists that we're repaving. And the red are new alignments, and all of them are to provide handicap accessibility.
Great. And will they all be also permeable?
No, uh, they're asphalt, but that's why we have the infiltration system so that that runoff is then infiltrated.
Is there any reason they shouldn't be permeable?
Matt, I know we looked at that. Um, can you talk to that?
Yeah, sorry, I'm muted. Um, we, I think we have looked at that in the past, and we looked at it for this project. Uh, one, one condition is that, and John can can agree with this, I think, but um, B W C will still have you treat them as impervious for the purposes of the calc. Uh, so it wouldn't really offset the um, the amount of storage that we had to put in with infiltration trenches. There are some alternatives that we can um, use, but they still are treated as impervious um, for the B W C calculations. The other thing is that they they tend to be more expensive. They tend to require a lot more maintenance, and especially given um, the amount of sediment that this site will see and and obviously the the challenge of maintaining a sixty to seventy acre site. Um, you know, the 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 permeable pavement requires a good deal of street sweeping and vacuum cleaning um, on a at least annual basis, if not more frequently for it to remain uh, permeable. So I think the project went for cost savings and durability over a potentially, you know, unreliable previous source while while instead implementing a more traditional um, and robust uh, storm capture system.
So I I understand that. So there are two reasons. One is, even if it were pervious, B W S E will still require you to do the same amount of stories that you're doing now. That's one reason. Two is if you did have permeable, then there is a maintenance cost to it in terms of cleanup every every year. Is it like both three things together, one or the other?
I think just all three, and then I think also just the the cost. Um, one, one material that's been uh, discussed and used in the city of Boston that that is still kind of being ironed out and um, looked at as the resin bound aggregate, which is a, it's a nice material, but the durability of it is not as strong as just a traditional pavement. Um, there are other options too, but they they tend to all be a little bit more costly, a little bit less durable and and require the main, and so it's kind of that trifecta. Um, the permitting thing is really more of a secondary um, requirement. We were, we were always going to provide the the necessary storage to meet the B W C standard, but it's more, I think, the wanting to install something that was durable and robust, and even if it doesn't see frequent cleanings would still would still hold up over the the next decades.
Well, overall, if we can agree that permeable payments in general are better than non-permeable ones for the environment from a conservation con- conservation perspective, then it seems like the cost is a deterrent here, and that would be interesting to understand better quantified. I mean, so we know whether this is something that's going to happen or not in a large scale. If government, when get getting an opportunity, decides against things like this, when when will this actually happen? Sorry, who's doing this project?
Boston Parks.
Parks Department. So um, yeah, when government has an opportunity to do this and decides against it, then you know, I just wonder who will then encourage more ecologically preferable, preferred options. Um, but I get it, I guess, sort of. And and in terms of the trees, it's good to hear that there are fifty-four new trees uh, being planted. How did you come up with that number?
It wasn't, the number wasn't any um, anything we predetermined. It was more of um, from past tree removal or loss, we felt like there were a need for trees in certain areas to provide shade or spatial definition. So it came, it wound up being fifty-four, but we didn't have a goal in mind.
What types are those?
They're all native trees, you know, um, and suitable for floodplains, you know, so they're red maple, sweet gum, black gum, uh, willow, those kind.
Let me see. Good, great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, on the um, pathways, um, Lauren, wasn't there um, an accessibility consideration here?
Yes, absolutely. So that is the main reason that we're redoing a lot of the pathways. It's been a question from the community for quite a while, um, looking at it. And partially like what we said is any of these red pathways right now, these new ones are strictly because of ADA accessibility. And right now, the current condition is that there is not, with all of these entrances in the whole of Back Bay Fens, there's not a single accessible entrance that gets you onto city property. Um, so once you get into the property, there are some accessible pathways, but there's no entrance that can get you there accessibly. Um, and so, yeah, there's a huge consideration for it. We've been working a lot with the Disability Commission as well. Um, and so they have been completely on board with us and really helpful in working through this project.
Okay, thank you. Um.
Chair Parker, Chair Parker, if I could just mention a Commissioner Condon. Um, a non-pervious surface with the properly sized infiltration system is far superior than a permeable pavement, because you have no guarantees people are going to maintain that. You must maintain. And if you get a department like a parks department that has needs everywhere, the first thing that's going to go is let's not sweep it this year because it doesn't look too bad. It starts to fail, you lose it. You won't lose it if you've just got those catch bases properly sized in an infiltration system that works far superior than to a permeable pavement surface. So permeable pavement beats it over just paved. Yeah, we'll give them that, but they're they're not there. They're they've gone one step further, and it's probably as costly building it to begin with. But maintenance, you know, God bless anybody that owns a set of small parks, trying to keep up with all the needs and requirement of the public is incredible. So I just wanted to clear that up. It's what they've got is superior to just permeable pavement. It's not as glitzy. I mean, you know, you're not going to.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, and the reason I bring it up, oh, go ahead, Lauren.
Oh, I was just going to say, if um, I got an answer, John, on the outfalls question, um, I reached out to Tom. Um, so he was saying that C D M Smith is actually contracted to do our annual maintenance. And so they, he believes they have a boat actually, and they do the um, the inspections and the water quality sampling. Um, he's not sure how D C R does it, and he also says that U S A C E no longer does a yearly, but they do periodic inspections. So I'm not sure if that helps with some of the questions you had earlier.
Yeah, well, don't worry. I wrote a little note to give Tom a call tomorrow to quiz the hell out of him, so.
Good. At least he's now prepared.
Yeah, there you go. No problem.
Thank you. And Commissioner Condon, um, the reason I brought up the question of accessibility, uh, next time you come over to Navy Yard to have tea with me, um, I'll show you a permeable uh, small permeable section of the Harbor Walk uh, that performs horribly uh, is um, uh, impacted uh, or compacted, I'm sorry. Uh, and it's not accessible because of all the washouts and all of that. It's it's a very difficult proposition. Um, but hopefully it'll take up my offer to come over and have tea sometime. Um, thank you. Commissioner Herbst?
I I just had a question about the um, riverfront area and the chapter ninety-one license. I I couldn't make heads nor tails of the uh, chapter ninety-one line, so I was just looking for you to confirm that none of the riverfront, all of the riverfront area is in chapter ninety-one jurisdiction.
Yeah, so there are um, some slides at the end of the presentation that we didn't show, um, just, you know, that um, have those crazy chapter ninety-one lines on them. So yes, portions of the park are um, within chapter ninety-one. Um, however, we didn't need, you know, a new license for that. Um, yeah, so there there's actually three slides here throwing, showing kind of like the three sections of the park. Um, so there's not really any chapter ninety-one on this slide. Um, yeah, so now these, uh, it's this red and yellow dashed.
Yeah, no, I I know these are the lines. I just couldn't make any sense of them, but I just want to confirm because you you're you're saying that you're exempt uh, based on on the chapter ninety-one licensure, that that covers all your riverfront work.
Yes, so we got um, you know, written permission, um, and that chapter ninety-one is all set. So that copy of that, I believe, was submitted to the committee.
That's right. It was there. I just, I uh, I just couldn't follow this.
Yeah, I know. I know. It's it's kind of hard to discern um, from our map of spaghetti here, but there's just, I mean, it's these tiny little sections of the path, as you can see, you know, that kind of cross the jurisdiction in a couple different places, but.
Also, I I just wanted to mention, because I was really uh, interested in in Commissioner Sullivan's comments about why uh, the pavement is is um, preferable. Um, we recently permitted something on one of the harbor islands that was through D C R that was some different kind of pavement that was supposed to be permeable. Um, that ma- maybe I just want to flag that to staff that that's something maybe we could look at. It may not for this project, but just to be aware of it was something that is apparently new, and we wanted to kind of track how it worked. So just flagging that. Thanks.
Good point. I remember that uh, as well. Okay, um, looks like we have a couple hands up. Uh, Jing Xiao? You can unmute yourself? Jing? Okay, I guess we'll go to Elizabeth.
Hi, um, thank you. Uh, my questions are related to the impacts to the Fenway Victory Gardens. Um, so will any of the new paving affect the garden plots? Will, you know, will the new paving cause any flooding? Um, will the new or expanded pathways lead to the loss of any plots or to the reduction of size to any garden plots?
No, the the um, paths that are surround the Victory Garden plots will be um, repaved, or ones that aren't paved will be paved, and then the same stormwater treatment will be in installed. Um, which there is no stormwater treatment in the the gardens now. So it will be no impact to plot size or number of plots, and we're also creating accessible paths to some of the public plots, which there are no paths to now.
So in the, thank you. Um, so in the the image that had the yellow, mostly yellow paths, and then a little bit of red ones to show which ones were new, are the.
Come back to that slide? Please. Thank you. Sorry, Elizabeth, go ahead.
Um, no, thank you. This is helpful. Um, so are these little red ones that are being added, like where? Where are those? I guess so. So those aren't in paths.
Apiary, the accessible, uh, the accessible garden and the sensory garden, I think.
Yeah, they're 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 currently um, accessible by the public gardens to make sure that the ones that are open to the public are also accessible to all of the public. Open to the public are also accessible to all of the public.
Okay, um, thank you. And do you have any idea of like where the trees are being planted throughout this? Whole process, this whole, um.
Throughout the park, um, although. Very few in the Victory Garden area because they're not really needed and we're not trying to add shade that would conflict with the garden. So there's more need. Um, south of Agassi Road than north of.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yeah, they're a really special space. So thank you.
And also, um, in terms of the tree plantings, I'm, if it's okay with the commission, I could put the project website in the chat. And the presentations from, I think we've, what, eight, seven public meetings, Kyle? Um, the presentations are all on the website and it does have information and slides on the planting. So Elizabeth, if you wanted to take a look at that, if it's okay with the commission, I can put that, um. That website in the chat for people.
Yeah, please do.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, Alison?
Jess, hi. Um, uh, I have, uh, thank you for, uh, talking about the permeable versus, uh, the, uh, non permeable. That was one of my questions. Uh, my other question is about, uh, the area on the lower left there where the new, um. Pathways are going to be, uh, crossing the Fenway across from the MFA. Uh, that steep slope and I'm assuming that's going to be. One of the sites for major regrading. Um. I, uh, wondered if you could talk about whether all these new paths are, um, asphalt or some are stone dust and. That particular area, I think you are doing some steps too. I don't know if you had that in the presentation.
Yes, and, and that area, there's a network of paths, um, proposed that. Will consolidate all the different desire lines that traverse that steep slope and go parallel to the Fenway. And it's providing an accessible route, which is the two red lines that kind of zigzag there. Um, and there wouldn't be a set of stairs to. Fulfill the kind of desire line, someone coming from the crosswalk directly to the footbridge. We know people want to do that. So we want to formalize it and harden that. But still provide the accessible route, um, that isn't very far, um, off that direct route. And in that case, we do have stone dust paths because we are matching stone dust paths, um, everywhere we connect there.
Okay, thank you. So, um. So some of the, these orange lines are going to be stone dust. Is that? What I'm hearing from you?
And I'm trying to think that may be the only place. Yeah, I think everything else is, hey, oh, no, in the very left hand side. Where we're in front of Simmons. The path going kind of vertically is, um, also stone dust, I believe. Cause that is an existing stone dust path.
Okay, okay, thank you. And also in the detail plan, I did see it was marked that one tree was going to be, uh, transplanted. Like, that wasn't mentioned in the presentation, what?
Yep, it's near that same area that we started talking about, the, uh, Southern Footbridge. It's a smaller tree that the Army Corps planted and it's only like three inch caliber and, um, we're regrading in that area. So we're going to pick it up and put it right back down at the new elevation.
Okay, thank you so much. And when you're doing the regrading, are you, uh, do you have to remove the soil from the entire site? You're taking it? To somewhere else or you're just moving it onsite or? Can you explain that a little bit more?
Generally moving it onsite because we are, um, particularly because it's a floodplain, we're balancing the cut and fill. So we don't expect that a lot of soil will leave the site or a lot of soil will be imported. We will bring in some topsoil, um, you know, for disturbed areas that had a thin layer of topsoil or that gets mixed in with sub soils. But we don't expect a lot of import or export.
Okay, good to, good to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, other hand up, uh, Emerald Necklace Conservancy.
Hi, um, my name is Karen Monty Brodeck, President of the Emerald Necklace Conservancy. Thank you so much for all of your work on this, Lauren. Kyle, I know you guys have been working for years on it. Um, it's really, really needed and important. Um, and I appreciate it's moving forward. Um, this spring, we actually rushed to do about a hundred and fifty four thousand dollars worth of tree pruning work. To be ready for this project to move forward. Um, and I. I would love to think that, you know, and I understand the cost of permeable pavements and the maintenance concerns. So I would, I'd love the opportunity maybe in the future to talk about whether or not there are ways we could partner, if there are ways that we could. Help, you know, do those things in the future if those are desirable. And I get it, they may not be, you know, sometimes these things aren't as, um, as easy or simple. I, uh, so I would hope that, you know, so my, my hope and I, and I'm, you know, we haven't had many recent, uh, check ins on this as we did in the, in the past. Um, I'm hoping that because we invested a hundred and fifty four thousand dollars into tree care, you don't have to do that. In combination with the project, you put more money into the pathways and into the new trees and things like that. I'm hoping there's. A net, net benefit in this coordination and the investment of our donors. Um. Please tell me that's true. Blink twice, Lauren. Okay, and then also the. And I totally appreciate, you know, dollars only go so far, but I, I would love to have the opportunity to continue to advocate for all the DCR parkways and reach out to DCR to try and get. All of the work in the project. I know once I reached out, um, to ask for more investment. Um, and I am not giving up, uh, if there are ways to try and do those things because I think. It's both the parkway, it's the, the exterior paths, it's the park, it's the, um, crosswalks. And I want to try and help in any way we can to try and bring all those pieces together. Um. And I, you know, again, um, I have installed some, done some resin paths in other places with other climate conditions. Um, uh, that, and one did develop a crack. Uh, so I, I don't know what the best future is for our, our, um. Our pathway future here in Boston. Um, but I really appreciate Commissioner Sullivan, your, your questions about the maintenance needs and trying to keep all those outfall clean and I. Uh, a lot of us on the Muddy River Oversight Committee are, are, are also trying to find ways to support. All of those needs so this area can, uh, can keep the investments that have come, have come to it. Um. And, uh, I know it is challenging. Um, I think offline, I would love to just make sure we can touch base on the very. Northern tip of the project because there is a Charles Gate project now that's starting with some of those pathways. I just want to make sure we're all coordinated and. Um, and we're not paying twice or something. We don't need to. Um, and you know, if there are other ways that the conservancy can support. Uh, this project moving forward, either with DCR coordination or in other ways, because, you know, the public. They're all pathways. They're all just about trying to get through the park. Um, I'd love to have that opportunity and also to talk about opportunities around Agassi Road. For, um, you know, access for bikes and other things. I know that's been a big challenge. To try and get all of those things, all of those needs sorted. So thank you, and I apologize for the odd photo in the background. Uh, I can't figure out how to turn off my background photo. Thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you, Karen. Okay, uh, I do see in the chat here, uh, DF in the southwest corner is a new pathway shown in red, actually, uh, a new bridge.
That's a really good question. So yes, there is a future bridge to reconnect at the Evans Way, um, former bridge. And that is not part of this project. That's just in the conceptual stage right now. So it's not part of what we're permitting now. So it's a completely separate, um. It's a completely separate future project.
Okay, great. Thank you. I don't see any other hands up. I don't see anything else in the chat. Elena, did you get any emails?
Um, I'm not seeing any emails either and no other hands are up.
Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to issue the order of conditions and close the hearing.
Moved.
Second, thank you, Commissioner Sullivan.
Aye.
Commissioner Condon.
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst.
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries for nothing. Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, uh, next item on the agenda, notice of intent for DEP file number zero, zero, six, twenty seventy. Boston file number twenty twenty five dash zero three five from GEI Consultants on behalf of the Massachusetts. Port Authority for the proposed repairs in maintenance at Black Falcon Terminal, including the removal of deteriorated timber piles, partial. Replacement of the fender system and repairs to the existing timber curb, concrete deck and mooring bollards at eighty eight Black Falcon Avenue. South Boston resource areas are designated port area land under ocean coastal bank, one hundred foot buffer to coastal bank, um, and fish runs. Fish runs and land subject to coastal storm flowage. Who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Uh, thanks, Chair Parker, Chris Bush here, Senior Environmental Planner with Masport. Uh, with me this evening are Chet Myers, our Deputy Director for Maritime with Masport, as well as. Uh, Russell Titmus and Joe Berthman from our consultant, uh, GEI. Uh, we have, uh, four agenda items for you this evening, all related to the. Uh, Sail Boston twenty twenty six event, uh, will be occurring next July. Uh, with that, I will hand it off to our, uh, GEI team.
Great, thank you.
Do you want me to go, Chet, or do you want to, any brief intros or? Just go for it?
Uh, no, I, I think Chris did a great job doing intros. I'll, I'll chime in as needed, but Russell, why don't, why don't you take it away or Joe, whoever?
So Russell Titmus from GEI, uh, good evening, everyone. Um. So the first of our projects we've got for you is at the Black Falcon Terminal. Um. If we can go to the next slide.
Oh, I thought, I thought it's something to say. Okay, so just for the commission's benefit, uh. Uh, Sail Boston is occurring, uh, in July of next year. Uh, it'll be a really big event with a lot of tall ships visiting, um, and some Navy vessels and, um. Uh, I know the city of Boston has been asked to host a number of ship, uh, vessels and we've been asked to host a number of vessels. Uh, and our, our, our proposal here, uh, that Russell is going to explain is mostly just to make sure that the berths. Can accommodate those vessels, that there's nothing in the way, um, and that there's no tripping hazards, um. Uh, that, that, you know, might interfere with, um, pedestrians accessing the site and, and visiting the vessels. That's it. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that is the short story is that all of these projects that we're going to present to you tonight are basically maintenance and to address safety hazards, uh. Around the edges of these different piers. So this first one is, uh, the Black Falcon Pier in Boston Harbor. The site locations right there is just outside the main ship channel along the reserve channel. Um, if we just go to the next slide. And the work is where that red line runs right around the pier. The, uh, it's on the north side and on the east end and all the way along the south side. From the cruise terminal past eighty eight Black Falcon. And if we can just go to the next slide. Uh, the entire site, this is the FEMA map, uh, entire site is land subject to coastal storm flowage. So the whole site is resource area. And if we just go to the next one. So this is basically the resource areas around the site and it also shows, uh, the, the red tinted area is basically the work area. So at the site, we've got land under ocean, obviously all around the pier. Um, it's also a fish run. Uh, there's a coastal bank there, the, um, the structure at the edge there. Is actually a very large concrete seawall. It's pile supported, but the piles you wouldn't be aware of because they're down below the mudline. The, uh, deck there is a big concrete cantilever that hangs out over the water. So as you drive around that perimeter, you're actually driving over the water. There's a big, uh. Uh, cantilever, it's about twenty feet wide all around that perimeter. And, um, the upland area is all land subject to coastal storm flowage. And then we're in the buffer zone to the coastal bank as well, which is obviously just a manmade seawall. All of the work here is maintenance work. Um, it's all associated with the berths along those edges. Um, it's not been clarified yet which particular ships are coming to which, which areas on this. Um, but, uh, right now provisionally, there's potentially a couple of tall ships. Um, and a Navy ship on this pier. And the, um, upland areas will all be open to the public for, uh, you know, viewing tall ships, visiting the ships actually on the pier and so on. Um, if we go to the next slide. This sort of indicates some of the, uh, sort of typical things we're trying to address really here. The, around the edge, there's a timber fender pile system. Uh, it's in pretty rough shape in some areas. Uh, that's really because along the cruise terminal, it's been superseded now by, um. There's large, uh, floating foam fenders there which the cruise ships rest up against. Um, unfortunately, we can't really use those for tall ships. Um, because the, they're spaced apart too far for a tall ship, uh, to rest against more than one of them. Uh, and then on the, the, the north side along Berths one and two. The, um, cement operation that is there today. Uh, has a couple of barges tied up alongside and we need to replace some of the fender piles there. The barges would be removed if it's used for tall ships and then, uh, we need something to put the tall ships against. Uh, we've got a few bollards and things that, uh, need some TLC. Um, and then, uh, there's some other safety hazards like the, uh, the edge curb, which around the edge of the perimeter is a timber. A curb, uh, just for vehicle safety, uh, that those areas need to get, uh, replaced. And it, and then there's also some, uh. Chips and dings, if you like, in the, uh, pavement and in the concrete deck surface. So we're going to patch those so we don't have tripping hazards. So it's all essentially replacing kind. There's no expansion, um. No new features. Um, it's if we're pulling, if we're replacing vendor systems, it will be pull one pile and drive a new pile. Um, if we're doing in water work like that, we would propose to use a debris boom or something around it to enclose the work area. Um, the water's, uh, thirty five feet deep around the pier and we're next to the main ship channel. So. A turbidity curtain is pretty challenging to use. Um, because it floats around too much in the depth of water. Um, and the upland areas, uh, because it's all fairly busy with traffic and everything. We would actually cordon off small working areas and just have a shifting work zone around the edge. So we can maintain traffic all the time. And that shifting work zone will enclose with silt sock or something similar to make sure we're containing any, uh. Any runoff from the, uh, work areas as we, as we work our way around. Um. We're not anticipating stockpiling stuff on the areas. It's all inland subject to coastal storm flowage. But again, for the same reason. It's all open to traffic. So we'll, we'll keep, uh, an area and we'll just progress around the pier and. Minimize the amount of material we've got to stockpile, um. Just store at any one time. Uh, and I think that's it for the slides.
Okay, great, thank you. Is that it?
Yep.
Great, thank you. Just want to remind members of the public to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat, the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise. Your hand by pressing star nine and star six, unmute yourself, or send your questions to staff at email at cc at boston.gov. Um. I don't have anything on this other than, um, I assume. The proponents saw the, um, DMF letter and is fine with those conditions being added to the, uh, order of conditions as special conditions.
I'm not sure that I've actually received the DMF letter. And do you have it, Joe?
I don't remember seeing it. Chris, do you remember seeing?
Looks like it just came in today.
Do you know?
I, I, I'd missed that. What, I'm sorry, what was that?
Apparently there was a special, sorry.
Yeah, we received a letter from DMF. It looks like it came in today. Today is September, yeah, September. No, we, we had asked that that be forwarded to us when receipts was, yeah, sometimes it's the day of. I did not get any email or correspondence, sorry.
Yeah, so I'll give you the short version, uh, no time of year restriction. Uh, minimize impacts from sedimentation turbidity and noise, uh, do, 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 uh, concurs with your intention to use vibratory pile driving and soft starts. So that sounds good. Um. At the beginning of the workday and anytime following cessation of pile driving for a period of thirty minutes of longer, longer, that's where soft starts. Soft starts shall commence with pile driving at a reduced energy for fifteen seconds. Followed by a one minute waiting period. You know all of this stuff, right? You, you are all professionals in this, this field.
Yeah, I don't think we have any problem with soft starts.
Okay, uh, recommends piles be removed by using a vibratory hammer rather than by direct pull or clamshell techniques. Lifted through the water column ever so slowly and placed on a barge equipped with sediment containment. Basin to minimize, uh, pile breakage and reduce sedimentation. And I think, Russell, you mentioned something about, um. Containment on the barge, right?
Uh, yeah, we would certainly put containment around anywhere where we're pulling piles and storing. Uh, yeah, we would certainly put containment around anywhere where we're pulling piles and storing them.
Uh, Parker, the only other thing that I would say is that sometimes piles are, uh, not in a good enough condition to be able to extract that way. And sometimes at that point we do have to cut them flush, but we could definitely commit to, to trying. And if, if possible, we will recover the piles that way. Absolutely.
Okay. And then I think the last is concurs that silitation debris control measures uh, or barges positioned below demolition work be implemented as needed to minimize the release of silt and debris generated, um, above water demolition work into the harbor.
Yep.
Okay, okay. We'll make sure you get a copy of this.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, Elena, what do you have?
Thank you, Sheriff Parker. I didn't have anything to add to this.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
No questions.
Commissioner Condon?
Are the tall ships particularly vulnerable in some way or would, would this all be like good prepare and preventive maintenance work to do anyway?
Uh, it's, it's all good maintenance work to do anyway.
Okay, great. Thank you. Let's answer, Parker.
Hey, Commissioner Herbst?
No questions.
Okay, um, Elena, I don't see any hands up. I don't see anything in the chat. Did you get any emails?
We did not.
Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to issue the order of conditions and close the hearing with the order of conditions, uh, containing the conditions, um, um, contained in the DMF letter of September third, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That carries for nothing. Okay, don't go away. Uh, next item, notice of intent for DEP file number zero zero six twenty sixty-seven in Boston file number twenty twenty-five dash zero three two from GEI Consultants on behalf of the Massachusetts Port Authority for the proposed maintenance of the Boston Fish Pier, including repairs and replacement of pavement bollards and curbing, as well as replacement of several safety ladders and the reattachment of fenders at two twelve Northern Avenue in South Boston along the waterfront. Uh, resource areas designated port area coastal bank, one hundred foot buffer coastal bank and land subject to coastal storm flowage. Who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Uh, again, thanks, Sheriff Parker, Chris Bush, Senior Environmental Planner here with, uh, Chet Myers and our GEI team, and I'll hand it right back off to, uh, Russell.
Thank you again, everyone. Um, we can just go to the presentation and, uh, so Boston Fish Pier in South Boston, um, we just skip. I'm just conscious we've got four of these for the commission to review. Um, so the project location, it's, uh, the Boston Fish Pier. Um, right alongside World Trade Center Commonwealth Pier and right next to the, uh, Boston Inner Harbor Ship Channel. Go to the next slide. Uh, so the, uh, location similar to Black Falcon, it's around all three faces of Boston Fish Pier. Um, the red line on that diagram just shows the work areas around the perimeter of the pier. Um, same approach as for Black Falcon. It's all maintenance type work. Um, it's all to address, uh, potential safety hazards and make sure we got safe berths for tall ships. Um, at this site, they are proposing to have multiple tall ships all around the perimeter and the pier will be open to the public. If we can, uh, just move to the next slide. Um, same again, the entire site is mapped as land subject to coastal storm flowage. It's all within the FEMA zone. Uh, next slide, please. So at this site, the pier is actually an old structure. Uh, it was, uh, I believe early nineteen hundreds, um, when it was first constructed or in this form anyway. Uh, granite seawall all around the extreme perimeter of the pier. Um, and it's a filled seawall, um, all the way down to the mudline. Water depths around the perimeter, uh, typically fifteen to eighteen feet. Um, we have land under ocean all around. It's a fish run again, um, at the northeastern end. And, uh, the coastal bank is a manmade seawall around the perimeter. Um, and we're working in the buffer zone and the entire site is land subject to coastal storm flowage. So our work area is that red, red shaded area around the perimeter. Um, mostly to address, um, defects in the paving, uh, to address tripping hazards. So if we, uh, move to the next slide. Um, so the area around the edge, it's a granite seawall on the edge, but the pavement top side outside all the buildings in that red, red area from the previous slide is all concrete paving. Um, it's a concrete slab on fill, uh, behind the granite seawall. Um, and there are multiple areas where there are cracks, um, which have spalled. So there's tripping hazards, there's some settlement. And so the intent will be to actually, uh, saw cut that pavement and, uh, replace it in sort of a patchwork fashion, really. Uh, it would be nice to do the whole thing, but, uh, that would be a much more extensive project. It's all trafficked area, so the work zone will be similar to Black Falcon where we, we'll have a small cordoned off area trying to maintain traffic flow around the perimeter. And, um, we'll just work our way around, uh, doing patch repairs to the concrete apron. Uh, there's also, uh, safety ladders all around the perimeter, which are actually used for them, uh, the fishermen getting on and off their boats too. That one that you see in the photo in the center there, I think if you can make out that it's a ladder, it's a bent piece of metal. Uh, the bolts bang into them and they just crash them. Uh, we've replaced quite a few of them around the perimeter. That happens to be one of the ones that's, uh, still not yet to be replaced, but basically they've become unsafe. And the anticipation is that some of the ships that come here may actually need to use the ladders too. Uh, there's a timber curb around the perimeter similar to Black Falcon. And just to, uh, maintain safety around the edge, we want to replace any sections of that that are damaged. And we've got a few of the bollards that, uh, either need replacement or we'll do some welding repairs. Um, and also just pretty them up a bit with a coat of paint. Um, that's about the size of it really, but like I said, we'll use the similar containment, uh, to Black Falcon. Silt sock around work areas on the top side. If we're doing work down on ladders and things like that, um, we would, uh, use a float to, uh, catch any debris to work from. Uh, any of that sort of work will actually be done at low tide, so we won't be doing true in water work. It's below high tide line, but we'll wait for low tide to be able to do that work. Um, and where we need to, where we're working right near the edge, we'll have debris booms and things deployed in the water. I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, so I didn't see anything from DMF, uh, in the files here. Um, Chris, Chet, did you get anything from them?
I, I did not, no.
I'm just wondering what I read to you before, um, it feels like maybe one or two of those items might be applicable. Or are they not?
I, yeah, I don't think that's unreasonable. What do you, what do you think, um, Chad and Russell?
Yeah, I think the stuff about deploying floats where we need to or something is, uh, totally reasonable. We've got no fender piles. So then none of the conditions about, uh, soft starts and things would apply. The fender system on this pier is, uh, is actually rubber fenders mounted right on the face of the granite. So there's nothing to, uh, pull or extract that way.
Okay, so I'm sorry, let me grab the previous letter for, for last hearing. So I think it is. Yep, just the, uh, you can't see this, but conditions three and four concurs that silitation debris controls, your control measures uh, be implemented to minimize release of silt and debris generated, uh, during above water demolition work into the harbor or above water work. I don't know if you're doing any demo. Um, and then the last one is, yeah, no time of year restriction. They didn't weigh in on it. So I think it's just three, which you just summarized, Russell. Okay. Um, I don't have anything else. Uh, just want to remind members of the public, uh, to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine, star nine and star six to unmute yourself or send your questions to staff via email at cc@Boston.gov. Elena, do you have anything?
I don't have anything on this. Thank you.
Commissioner Sullivan?
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Condon?
No questions.
Commissioner Herbst?
No questions.
I don't have any questions. I don't see any hands up. I don't see anything in the chat. Uh, I don't have access to email. Have to rely on Elena for that. Any emails?
Apologies, no, we don't have any emails either.
Okay, good. Then I will, uh, entertain a motion to issue the order of conditions with the one special condition, uh, recommended in the DMF letter of September third for the, um, oh boy, for the previous hearing, uh, this is terrible, Boston Fish Pier. And it's just the filtration and debris control measures is a special condition. So close the hearing, issue the order of conditions with that special condition.
Moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, notice of intent for DEP file number zero zero six twenty sixty-eight in Boston file number twenty twenty-five dash zero three three from GEI Consultants on behalf of the Massachusetts Port Authority for the proposed removal of broken fender piles, uh, partial replacement of the fender system, including piles, whales and checks, chocks and repairs to the existing timber curb, concrete deck and mooring bollards at Pier One, One East Pier Drive, East Boston. Uh, resource areas land under ocean coastal bank, one hundred foot buffer to coastal bank, one hundred foot buffer to rocky intertidal fish runs and land subject to coastal storm flowage. Same crew for the, uh, proponent, I assume?
Same crew, yeah. Chris Bush, Shep Myers, representing Mass Board and, uh, Russell Titmus and Joe Berthamman with our consultant, uh, GEI. On to you, Russell.
Thank you. Um, let's move to the slides. So East Boston Pier One, uh, next to Pierce Park over in East Boston. Um, right on the ship channel yet again, um, in Boston Harbor. We can, uh, just move to the next slide. So this is, uh, the aerial view of East Boston Pier One. Um, we're working on the red areas, uh, around the perimeter again. Um, uh, only on those two sides though, uh, not on the side where the, uh, tall ship Boston is permanently moored. We can, uh, move to the next slide. Uh, yet again, the entire site is mapped by FEMA as flood zone, so it's all land subject to coastal storm flowage. And next slide, please. So the work areas here are the red areas on the pier. Um, we've got land under ocean, uh, all around. It's a fish run on the end again up the main ship channel. Um, this pier is actually, uh, pile supported over its entirety. It's a concrete deck, solid concrete deck. Um, supported through, uh, so the water flows through underneath the pier. Um, on the, um, shoreline, there is, uh, a seawall, which is a coastal bank. And then there are some areas of rocky intertidal along the face of that seawall, which actually are all below the pier, pier deck in proximity to our site. Um, because it is all open water underneath the pier. So we have buffer zone along the street. Um, but the site itself is, uh, is all out over the water. Um, same approach yet again on this, uh, pier. They're all, um, maintenance type repairs just to address, um, site operations, site safety. Um, all associated with the tall ships coming. So it's, uh, the anticipation again is that, uh, there'll be a couple of tall ships at this site. And the pier will be open to the public to actually come and, uh, get on off the ships. If we can just go to the next slide. Uh, so we have some areas where we need to obviously remove part of the timber fender system. Uh, that's particularly bad portion of it that you're looking at in that photo top left. Um, but we do want to replace some of the fender piles, so we have enough fender piles in place for the tall ships to moor against safely. And the whale and the chalk are the, uh, timbers along the edge of the concrete pier deck. Uh, so we want to replace those as well in, uh, some locations. Um, same approach as before. If we're, uh, doing anything with the fender piles, we'll pull one pile and drive a new pile in the same location. So it'll be one out and one in and we'll try and pull it. Um, again, I, we haven't actually seen anything from DMF, but we would expect to comply with any of the, uh, conditions that DMF are setting if they're similar to the ones for the Black Falcon. Uh, the work area here, again, we would contain within a debris boom. Uh, because we're right next to the ship chan, main ship channel. We don't really want to be trying to use turbidity curtains in some of these areas. Um, the, uh, this site is not as busily trafficked, but, uh, along the south face, it's pretty restricted for working area. So we did anticipate that to all be localized work areas and, but along the, um, I gotta get my orientation right, east face really. Um, so the side you're actually looking at in that photo where the fender piles are, um, it's probably a little more open. We could maybe have a slightly larger area, but we're deploying debris boom, so it'll be uh, moved along as we go along. We won't just try and wrap it around the whole pier. Um, top side, we'll use silt socks again to contain work areas, but we do have, um, some patch repairs to do on the deck and there's some bollard repairs and things that we also need to do. Uh, the one difference with the previous sites with this one, there's a small patch of timber decking at the southeast corner. Um, which is in that top right photo. Um, underneath some of those, uh, metal plates and things, there's timber decking. You can see there's a portion of it missing in the center of that. So we would replace the timber deck just for safety over that area. So there's no holes that kids can go down and things. Um, that area, we'd have debris boom around while we're working and then, uh, replace the timbers, bring them topside and, uh, just put replace in kind with new timber decking. And I think that's it.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, uh, so for this one, let's look at DMF again. I think, are you pulling any pilings?
Yes, we are.
You are. So it'd be all the conditions that we mentioned for the first hearing?
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, Elena?
Nothing to add on this either. Thank you.
Commissioner Sullivan?
What's the budget for all this work?
We haven't actually established that yet, uh, Commissioner Sullivan.
Just keep spending money till you get, get it right? Is that how that works?
Well, we obviously need to do a certain amount of work to make sure that the public's safe.
I understand, I, yeah. Okay, I can't help it. It's a Wednesday evening and they drag me up and keep me awake all night. So I have to come up with something.
I get it. No, I get it.
I'm all set.
Yeah, you get off easy. Um, okay. I just want to remind members of the public to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself or send your questions to staff at email at cc@Boston.gov. Commissioner Condon?
Thanks, Sheriff Parker. Does this mean the sites which are currently not being used for any docking become usable after this repair?
So for example, uh, Commissioner, um, East Boston Pier One is actually available for docking. Um, however, it's not in the best of condition. Um, there's areas that you really can't dock at. Uh, it's only available for certain sized vessels in very specific locations, but the work that we'll be doing will uh, reopen it up to, to full size vessels for each side of the pier. Um, at, uh, Fish Pier, uh, the site is already thoroughly used by fishing vessels. Um, and there aren't a lot of restrictions for those fishing vessels. However, tall ships are not exactly the same as fishing vessels. Um, and actually a majority of the work that we plan on doing at Fish Pier has to do with tripping hazards. Um, which is not, I mean, it's an issue for the fishermen there right now, but they're familiar with those working conditions. Um, and the general public is not. So we're, you know, we're, we're working on repairing that as well. Although I will say that I know that the fishermen there will appreciate the, the repairs that we do. Sure. Um, it's some situations at, at the cruise port. I'm sorry.
No, it just seems like the general safety. No, it just seems like the general safety capacity and accessibility in terms of vessel types all increases due to, all increase due to this.
That, that absolutely should be the case, yes, in, in all scenarios.
Great. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Herbst?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Um, Elena, I don't see any hands up.
I see no hands and we did not receive any emails about this either.
Okay, and just quickly, Elena, in the site visit photos here, uh, we discussed earlier some um, some pavement that was um, installed along the harbor walk there.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's picture number one. There's a picture of my building in the background, which is beautiful. Um, but um, that's what I'm talking about. If you could, you can look at it later. That's new pavement. That's been placed there within the last um, couple of months.
I see. And yeah, try to sort out.
Okay, okay. So um, with that, I would entertain a motion to um, issue the order-
Commissioner Parker, can I ask which location we're referring to right now? Is this East Boston Pier 1?
No, this is uh, Husack Pier and it had nothing to do with your project.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, it's along the harbor walk. I just noticed it because that's my uh, nightly constitution by the USS Constitution. Um, and it just dramatically appeared a few months ago. Um, and I've always meant to um, mention it to Elena, but nothing to do with you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, uh, so uh, entertain a motion to close the hearing, uh, issue the order of conditions with the special conditions that are suggested in the DMF, DMF letter of September 3rd, 2025?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That carries four, nothing. Okay, thank you. I think, I think that's it for us, right? Was that the, oh no, I'm sorry. I skipped one. Okay, we have one more. Uh, in my haste to look at those site pictures. Okay, so that parry carries four, nothing. Next item on the agenda is notice of intent for DEP file number 006 2069, Boston file number 2025 dash 034 from GEI Consultants, Inc. On behalf of the Massachusetts Port Authority for the proposed repairs to the existing concrete bulkhead cap and sidewalk pavement in the temporary removal of guardrails and floating dock and the installation of a ramp or gangway for access to vessels at Husack Pier, 75 Constitution Road in Charlestown. Resource areas coastal bank, 100 foot buffer to coastal bank and land subject to coastal storm flowage. And who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Thanks Chair Parker. Again, uh, Chris Bush, Shep Myers with Massport and our consultants with GEI. Uh, hand it off to Russell one last time.
Did we lose Russell?
He's muted.
No, I mute, managed to mute myself by, instead of unmute myself. Sorry about that. Okay, so Husack Pier, also known as Constitution Wharf. Um, Charleston, Massachusetts. If we can go to the next slide. Uh, the project location right there next to the USS Constitution. Um, go to the next slide. So the repairs at this site are just down the one side um, of the pier, not where the marina is, but uh, opposite the USS Constitution. Um, the work at this site is all upland really along the edge. Uh, it's right along the harbor walk. If we can go to the next slide. Um, it's land subject to coastal storm flowage all around the perimeter. Uh, so we're working in uh, in that FEMA zone along the edge. Go to the next slide. And so um, resource areas at the site, we've got land under ocean. Uh, around the perimeter of this pier, it's all steel bulkhead. Um, so man-made coastal bank yet again. Um, we have land under ocean and a fish run again on the outside and then we're working within that 100 foot buffer zone to the coastal bank. And the work limits are the red area just along the one side of uh, the pier opposite the Constitution. Uh, next slide. So this is the edge today. Um, they wanted more ships along this face. There's actually a fender system uh, which you can't see in this photo. It's timber fender system on the outside face, which is actually in pretty good condition. Um, it's all within the harbor walk, but what we have through here is you see in the foreground there, the bollard. Um, which is on the landward side of the guardrail along the edge. So really most of the work at this site will be temporary works, just so we can tie up ships and things. Uh, whi- which means cutting out sections of the guardrail. Um, and possibly installing sort of uh, some sort of temporary ramp so that you can get on off a ship more easily over that concrete edge. Uh, there are one or two areas where we may end up doing a bit of asphalt patching um, to make sure there's no tripping hazards and things. Um, if we take out any of the guardrail, um, it's all welded construction right now. It will put it right back how it is today in that photo. Um, but um, it's really just about making sure we can actually tie up a ship here. It's like with most of the other sites, it's not been confirmed 100% what ships would be along here. I think the last thing I heard was potentially um, a US Navy ship. Uh, you can see in the distance out in the water there, they have the security boom there. Um, which is, is across the embayment for the Constitution. Uh, that would need pulling back just on a temporary basis if it's ships coming in here. And I suspect if it was a Navy ship tied up, they'd put it right back behind the ship while the ship was in the dock there. Um, so yeah, that's about it at this particular site.
Okay, thank you. So Russell, um, you may have misspoke, but did you say something about fish runs? Because we don't have that listed as a resource area.
I thought I did say it was a fish run on the end. I don't know, did I uh? Is it a fish run on the end there, Joe?
I believe they all technically um, run, but the, the fish run technically runs by all of them. Uh, it was in the NOI. It may just not have been listed on that opening slide of the PowerPoint.
Yeah, I didn't get to uh, the script here. Okay, I apologize for that. So-
Essentially, it's because we're not working within that area anyway. We're just working in the embayment.
Okay, okay. So it sounds like the DMF letter, um, there were no time of year restrictions for your first project, but that's a different part of the harbor. Um, I'm just a little, I'm trying to think through uh, if there is a fish run there. We don't have, Elena, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think we have any DMF comments?
We do not know. So um, DMF did not get back to us with comments on um, this project and on, sorry, just checking my notes. Um, and for the Fish Pier.
Okay, so, but they're not working in the fish run area?
I don't, I don't believe there's any in-water work associated with this. Is there?
That's what I was gonna say. There's no knowing water work.
For this, for this specific one, there is, there is for Pier 1. Uh, maybe for Fish Pier, although it's not the primary thrust of the application. And I believe there is at the cruise port, but not, not at this location.
So I think that would, that at least for the resource areas, that would be why we didn't include the fish runs since the work isn't happening within the fish run itself.
Yeah, got it. Got it. Okay, okay.
I'm not sure a time of year restriction would affect anything that we're proposing to do at Husack Pier.
Okay. Okay, that all sounds good. It all makes sense. Um, would we need the uh, third condition there? Um, for filtration um, measures for anything falling off the pier?
So you, it, we could certainly include that as, because any areas, if we're doing any patch repairs, topside or anything, um, we would put silt sock and stuff around. So, so we'd have siltation controls in there.
Okay, okay, sounds good. Um, that's all I had. Uh, before I um, go here, just want to remind members of the public to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat, the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing-
Age rock contractors, if you work with the vast age of-
One needs to mute themselves, please? Okay, thank you. Um, got it over. Uh, remind members of the public to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six. Don't mute yourself or send your questions to staff via email at cc@Boston.gov. Um, Elena, do you have anything?
I did not have anything on this uh, beyond the, the DMF note and um, just noting that we, we conducted the site visit um, on the same day as the rest of them.
Okay. And I jumped ahead, but you, the, the picture I was referring to is-
Yes, I noted. So we'll, yeah, we'll try to sort out who had done those repairs.
Four or five of those um, along that stretch there. So I don't know what happens and it might, yeah, it's another matter. Um, Commissioner Sullivan?
No questions.
Commissioner Condon?
No questions.
Commissioner Herbst?
Questions.
Okay, I don't have any questions. I don't see any hands up.
I see, I see a hand up.
Oh, there it is. Scott. Scott, you can unmute yourself.
Good evening. Uh, Scott Rickards, I work with Lincoln Property Company. We represent the owners of Constitution Wharf, the tenant of Massport. Just uh, maybe this isn't appropriate for this hearing, but I was curious if the condition of the harbor walk during construction, will it remain open fenced off? And will this affect any of the parking that's adjacent to the harbor walk?
So it'll be on a case-by-case basis and we will obviously uh, discuss these issues with our tenants before we make any, any move like that. Um, and chances are, we, we've done work before uh, on uh, areas to the edge of Husack Pier. And what we've typically done is uh, rerouted the harbor walk around the area of construction. Uh, I don't, I don't think we would expect a full closure of the harbor walk.
Thank you.
Of course.
Great. Well, Scott, since you're here and you're the owner's rep, um, Elena will be getting in touch with you um, regarding the um, paving that I um, identified on the harbor walk.
Sure, uh, if you can show me that picture again, then maybe I can even answer it now.
She'll, she'll give you a call if you can leave your contact info uh, in the chat. That'd be great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
And Chairman, Chairman Parker, do you believe this is on Massport property or? Or uh, outside?
The harbor walk. I didn't realize it was Massport's property with a uh, lease to the tenants. So it might be your property. It's the-
I mean, we own basically to the boundary with uh, the USS Constitution uh, or the shipyard, uh, the United States shipyard that's on the sort of the eastern side of the property all the way around to uh, Constitution Wharf. We own the harbor walk all the way around to that edge of the property before it's taken over by City of Boston property. Commissioner Sullivan's pretty familiar with it too, I'm sure.
Okay, I'm sure we can figure it out. Um, just, just in short, uh, I noticed there was a like mini cat over there. Um, let's say, I can't remember, six weeks ago, two months ago. And then paving appeared in four or five discreet sections along the harbor walk. Um, slightly raised. So um, the good thing is there's an embankment or berm right where um, it, it wouldn't cause anything to um, get into the harbor. It wouldn't divert stormwater or anything, but it's new. So uh, it just raised the question, um, why is it there?
Well, we'll look into that on our end as well.
Okay, I appreciate that. Okay, um, so with that, I would um, and then as far as the uh, um, DMF um, conditions, I'm sorry, I forget where we left off here. Um, we weren't worried about the time of year restrictions. Um, would it only be that number three, Elena?
And it's, it's possible if none of the, the work is in water that and trap, just to clarify, I believe that the only in-water work here would be potentially moving the um, the, the floating docks that are already in the water.
Correct. You just move them, them sideways, just toe in them literally with a small bow.
So yeah, so we'll, we'll um, we can check to make sure that DMF didn't have comments on it, but maybe that's the reason that they, they didn't get back to us. But um, I can confirm another, right Chair Parker, I think it makes sense to apply similar conditions to the other projects.
Okay, okay. And then chat, if DMF for some reason does come up with um, comments similar to the letter that they sent in for the first project, I assume uh, you wouldn't mind if we throw those into special conditions?
Nope.
Okay, okay, sounds good. Um, so with that, I would entertain a motion to issue the order conditions and close the hearing.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, good night, Massport. Good night.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your patience. Thank you.
No, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, notice, notice of intent for DP file number 006 2065 and Boston file number 2025 dash 030 from Ty and Bond on behalf of N-Star Electric Company, DBA, EverSource Energy to conduct three landside exploratory borings and nine in-river exploratory borings at 173 Alfred Street in Charlestown. Resource areas land under ocean, 100 foot buffer to coastal bank, fish runs and land containing shellfish. Who's here on behalf of the proponent?
That would be me, uh, Patrick Felion, uh, environmental specialist at EverSource. Um, good evening, uh, Chair Parker and the rest of the commission. I am joined by Valerie Locker from Ty and Bond and she will uh, present this uh, this geotech program to the commission.
Thank you.
Take it from there, Val. Thanks.
All right. Thanks for the introduction, Patrick. You can uh, jump to the next slide here. So what we are proposing tonight is geotechnical survey that's being done in advance of some transmission line replacements. EverSource is looking at the sighting and design of these projects. There are three existing, three sets of existing underground transmission lines that run from the substation in Everett, under the Mystic River. The survey that we're proposing, it's necessary to continue that sighting and design and it runs across three different jurisdictions. There's 32 boring locations proposed in total. And uh, 13 of them occur within Boston. The survey is being permitted now. The line replacements themselves, if needed, will be permitted at some point in the future. Those are anticipated to be installed with a trenchless technology and may or may not need permitting at a later date after design is finalized. The schedule for the geotechnical survey, we anticipate, hope to start it this October, November pending all permits received. And we anticipate the entirety of the program to take about four months. If you can jump to the next slide. Uh, just a little bit of the orientation, all of the locations where we're proposing are in the vicinity of the Malden Bridge. That's where Alfred Street crosses from Charlestown over to Everett. We do have, there are 12 total borings that are within the jurisdiction of the Boston Conservation Commission. There are some overlapping resource areas here, so the, the numbers don't totally add up. There are 11 total. Uh, sorry, there are nine borings that are in the land under ocean in the Mystic River, two of which are also in designated port area. And then there are also two borings that are in Title Flat, which is coastal beach under the Wetland Protection Act. One of those is also identified as a suitable area for shellfish and is so land containing shellfish. Three, there are uh, three landside borings that are proposed within the 100 foot buffer zone to coastal bank per the uh, CMR. Borings that are located only within buffer zone are exempt minor activities. So we've identified them here for you, but recognize them as minor activities. There are no borings proposed within riverfront area, land subject to coastal storm flowage or the waterfront area. One other comment here is that the Mystic River is a fish run, so all of the in-water borings are also in fish run. There's, that's 11 total, the nine land under the ocean and two that are title flat. Okay, you can advance to the next slide, please. These are some representative photos of the area. The top one is the landside boring that's in the MBTA Charlestown campus. That's in a paved parking lot. The uh, bottom photo there is from the bike path facing towards the decommissioned uh, Mystic Generating Station. Uh Mystic Generating Station. Downstream of the Malden Bridge and that's where some of the in-water borings are proposed. And next slide. Here are some locations that are in the vicinity of the MWRA's um turbine property. The first photo from Google Street View is facing towards the. Proposed boring location B eleven, that's the one that's in title flat as well as uh shellfish suitability area. And then the bottom photo is a representative photo of the. Maintained lawn portion of the MWRA property where some of those landside borings are proposed within hundred foot buffer zone to coastal bank. Next slide. A quick overview here, I know there's a lot of text, I'll try to. Address it in a reasonable way um describing how the in-river borings will be conducted. They'll be done with a drill rig that's mounted onto a barge. There will be a single barge, it'll anchor in place with four anchors. The drill will be advanced within a fully threaded six inch casing and so the. Uh drill cuttings and the drill fluid will be fully encased throughout the process. The casing will extend all the way from the mudline through organic um. And non-plastic soils, below that they'll switch to a rotary wash system, but the casing will stay in place through the organic soils. The drilling fluids will always be contained either within the casing or within the mud tub on the barge deck. And the boat will, the barge will be serviced with a single support boat that will be docked at a local marina, which is still to be determined where it will be docked. The barge itself will be launched from a crane, use uh from an existing commercial facility along the Mystic River. I believe they're going to use Semper Marine in Charlestown for that uh barge launching area. The drill, each boring is going to be drilled to a depth between ninety-five to a hundred and twenty-five feet below the mudlines, they're quite deep borings. And uh we estimate four to five days per boring because of those depths. So that explains why the entire program is anticipated to take up to four months. At the completion of each individual drill location, the bore hole will be backfilled with a mixture of neat cement or cement bent night grout. Mixed with the drill cuttings themselves to about fifteen feet below the mudline. And then from fifteen feet up to the mudline, it'll be backfilled entirely with the drill cuttings. And any excess drill cuttings will be appropriately managed for off-site disposal as needed. Um next slide, please. Here's a representative photo from the drilling contractor of a typical. Drill barge and configuration of the equipment. In addition to. The uh procedures that, in addition to the um sediment management procedures that we mentioned, there will be some additional environmental controls. For pollution prevention, including a specific refueling protocol that'll be done via the support boat. Any uh potentially hazardous materials like that will be contained within secondary containment on the barge. The barge will have a spill containment kit and a floating spill containment boom as needed if there happens to be any spill. And then just to quickly give you a recap about where we are with our other agency coordination, we. Um have coordinated with the Division of Marine Fisheries, they agreed to a time of year restriction waiver. For these proposed activities and had no concerns regarding. Um any fisheries resources for these survey activities. The DEP also didn't have any additional comments on the NOI submittal. We, uh I don't have it here on the slide, but we are also moving through our Army Corps Coordination for both Section four oh four and four oh eight. And are hoping to receive those permits in the next month or two. With that, I think you can go on to the next slide, which just has a recap of the proposed activities for reference. And we open it up to any discussion questions.
Okay, thank you, Val. So you answered my question about DMF. Um did you, did you get a letter from them? Elena, I don't think we got a letter. Um we typically do, right?
The four. Please, I don't believe that we received a letter from DMF and did you please let me know if I had some comments that I'm in our inbox.
No, we didn't receive a DMF comment letter.
Okay.
Kate Frew responded via email both about the um. Time of year restrictions and for comments on the survey activities, I believe we included those copies of those emails. In the NOI package, they're in one of the appendices.
Okay, fantastic, thank you. I'll look for it, um if if you didn't, then uh we would like to have it, that would be great. Um with that, uh just want to remind members of the public, uh uh if you would like to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat. In the application via the Zoom meeting platform, if you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine. And star six to unmute yourself or send your questions to staff via email at CC at Boston.gov. Um I don't have any other questions, Elena?
I don't have any other questions either, I'm just um if you come back to me after uh any of the other commissioners ask their questions, I can try to find. Um the page that has the notes, oh, here it is, sorry, um I stalled for long enough, so uh DMF, yes, had um responded. And they said that uh DMF would be okay waiving the time of year restriction for the proposed boring work within the Mystic River. And then they just asked for the um diameter of the borings, but that was the only note that they had.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, I was just curious, you you borings are all over the place here, how many sets of, I assume these are the one fifteen KV. Steel tubed, oil filled uh lines, is that what you're trying to check on?
I believe so, there's three sets of lines, sorry, Patrick, you can take this one.
Yeah, yeah, oh okay, yeah, I'll 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 take that one, Commissioner. Um yes, we are pro- proposing to replace three of the existing one fifteen. Um high pressure fluid filled lines, um the three sets of those that go across the Mystic. Um we have, we are currently evaluating um two alignments for each one of those those crossings. So that we can it select the most appropriate um crossing uh location. Um based in it in it in it. Relates back to um to our design um to to. Identify the the best location to cross.
Alright, yeah, I was just curious.
That's why we're, that's, yeah, that, sorry to interrupt, so that's why we're trying to evaluate multiple uh multiple potential crossing locations for for each of those replacement lines.
Yeah, cuz I saw one set of those lines winds up going through the Ryan Playground that they're reconstructing right now, the city is. I think one of your sets of one fifteen comes into there, just be nice to coordinate us, we don't have a new playground and then all of a sudden you decide. Let's go see if we can dig it up. The the other thing was strange is you you're on MWRA property with the one fifteen KV. Is that a a source for their electricity for their pump station or you just thinking of running the line through there?
We have an existing line that crosses in that location, it's actually, that one is actually a three forty-five, I believe.
Okay.
That crosses from from the uh from the from the turbine and it goes over to. Uh I think that's the one that ends up in Somerville.
Yeah, you know, over the bus terminal. No, I was just, I was just curious, the way you had it spread out there, it was kind of different. But you know, this, that whole idea of you are dumping on the Ryan Playground, it'd be nice to coordinate with the city so we don't finish a playground. So that we can practice digging that up again. Anyway, that's all my comments.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Condon?
Yeah, that coordination makes a lot of sense, hope that happens. Um what is the drill cutting?
So the the drill cuttings are, um when you're advancing an auger, um so basically what we have is a. Um. The whole system, uh kind of take it, take it, take it back here for a second, just to kind of try to explain. Um the different parts and pieces to a to a geotechnical drilling um equipment. Um so basically what we have, uh the first step is to drive the casing, which is a hollow tube into the mudline like Val had had explained. Um that casing gets advanced down to to a to a certain level. Um in within that casing, there is another pipe that is connected to a. To it, to an auger, if you will, um in that auger has little holes in it that can. Um. That fluid, which is water, is pumped down through this hollow tube from the barge. The barge sitting up on, you know, sitting up on the on the on the um. The drill rig itself is sitting on a barge, I'm sorry, and it's pumping a a water mixture down the pipe. Down the, down the inner pipe, which is connected to the drill head, that water is shooting out while the drill head is spinning. Okay, and while that drill head is spinning, it is, it is literally cutting into any sort of rock. Um basically fluidizing that material and the pressure that's being pushed down. The the drill string or the drill rod um comes up back up through the through the through the outer casing. And it comes back up into what's called a mud tub, which is essentially, it's it's a, I don't know, four to six foot long. Um by probably two foot wide um tub. Um and that fluid that comes back out is 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 got these drill cuttings in it, so it's got. Sand and little tiny bits of rock, et cetera. Um and that material is collected in. This mud tub, okay, there's also, we're recirculating that water. Through a through a pump, so it's, so you're basically have a have an intake that goes back in, so it's it's a closed system, so the water that keeps going. The water will go down the string and it'll come back up, it, when it comes back up, it's carrying this um this material. So what the drillers do is they physically scoop out the the drill cuttings from this mud tub. And they containerize it temporarily, um which is generally done in just like fifty-five gallon drums, um which will be stored on the on the deck of the barge temporarily. Um and and that's, that's essentially what the what the drill cutting management is um during the during the drilling process. I don't, hopefully that's sort of the answer to your question.
No, that's helpful, thank you. So it's ba- it's basically earth and material, it's not metal or anything, it's.
No, 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 no metal, no metal, no, it's, no, our, the whole goal of the program. Is to evaluate the different um the different sediment layers, if you will, and or rock. That we'll get into um during that, during each one of those individual bores.
I ask because it it, you know, you said it's gonna to refill back the space up, you'd be using the drill cuttings and so I wanted to be sure. Thank you for that explanation.
Su- certainly, certainly.
Um the, w- hopefully this question will be quick, it's, it says, you said four to five days per drill. And I assume the drills are gonna be happening serially, like one after another, right?
That would be the expectation, yes.
Because the barge positions itself in one place, does the drill and then moves to a different place.
Exactly, exactly.
But it is anchored, right, which means there's probably some slack in the line, so if it moves. While the drilling is happening, wouldn't it disturb a whole lot of sediment?
The the barge itself, the the drill casing sticks up through the middle of the barge, there's like a cutout in the barge itself. So as um if we could go back to the picture of the.
So the barge may move, but the drill stays in place in one point.
Yes, the 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 barge obviously will go up and down with the tides.
Also sideways.
Not gonna, it's not gonna go off, it may shift, it may spin, but it's not going to. Be able to go past that that casing, cuz the casing is gonna essentially be a pin. Holding it in place, but I mean, it's gonna be held in place by the anchors, the barge will be held in place by the anchors. Um but there's no way for that barge to go like. Come off of the casing, if you will.
Right, but the barge will move though, because there there will be slack in the line connecting the anchor to the barge, I assume.
Just like any vessel in that's anchored, yes, there'll be some minor movements.
But nothing that'll disturb the drill itself?
No.
Right, thank you, that's all, Chair Parker.
Uh Commissioner Herbst?
No questions, thanks.
Uh Elena, I don't see any hands up.
Not seeing anything either, and we had not received any um comments prior to the hearing or any emails during the hearing.
Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to issue the order conditions and close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan.
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries four nothing, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good night. Uh there have been two continuances continued, notice of intent for DEP file number zero zero six one nine nine six in Boston file number twenty twenty-four dash zero two one. And notice of intent for DEP file number zero zero six twenty forty-two in Boston file number twenty twenty-five dash zero one four. Will now begin our regular meeting, first item on the agenda is administrative update, which is the discussion of tree work within buffer zones at the. Arnold Arboretum, one twenty-five upper way in Jamaica Plain.
Thank you, Chair Parker, and I believe that we have um a few representatives from the Arboretum here to present.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Rodney Heeson, I'm Director of Horticulture and Landscape at the Arnold Ar- Arboretum of Harvard University. And also we have uh Rachel Breckman, who's our manager of Horticulture and Landscape. Um and we've got uh three trees that we would like to review with you all and um and next slide, please. Just as a reminder, the Arnold Arboretum is both part of Harvard University and Boston Park System. Earlier, we looked at the Back Bay Fins and we're contin- continuance of that through the Emerald Necklace. And you can see in the red oval there where the Arnold Arboretum is located. And we continually look um for both dead wood and dead trees around our roadways and pathways. We get approximately one point six million visitors per year and so making sure that um are. Any sort of hazards are are dealt with timely is of utmost importance. Next slide, please. As a frame of reference, the three trees that we want to review with you all are located along Hemlock Hill Road. And Bussy Brook, the adjacent, um and you can see in this slide, it's just off a floor away. And adjacent, just east of Walter Street. The three trees we're gonna be looking at are uh sweet birch, the first one, the second one's a sour wood. And the third is a red pine. Next slide, please. And you can see where the red number one is the sweet birch. Red number two um is the sour wood and they're falling within that wetland buffer zone. Next slide, please. And the third tree is the red pine, again falling within that wetland buffer zone. Next slide, please. So sweet birch, um which is, it's about seventy-eight feet from Bussy Brook, it's approximately thirty-five feet tall. The tree has died and there is a a major rot at the base of the tree. And there's a large cavity at the base, there's a a pathway adjacent to this tree. That's used by visitors, it's used by staff. And also the Boston Outdoor Preschool Network, they use the site frequently, so there are young kids. Walking in around this tree on a daily basis. Next slide, please. And next tree I mentioned is the sour wood and it's about forty-four feet from the edge of Bussy Brook, it's approximately twenty-five feet tall. And it died uh earlier this summer and again, the canopy poses a hazard to both staff and visitors. Next slide, please. And then our last tree to review with you all is the red pine. And then our last tree to review with you all is the red pine, Pinus resinosa. Our red pines are slowly dying out. It, the red pine in general is a tree native to Eastern North America, but is. More suited for colder climates, so as part of climate change, we're seeing. Our red pines suffer and decline. It's about fifty feet off of Bussy Brook. And it's approximately forty feet tall. And again, there's an adjacent pathway you can see in the left photograph. That is frequently used by staff and visitors. Next slide, please. So we would utilize our in-house certified arborist using our. That the slide you see there of our new, it's called a Dino Lift. And it's a lightweight machine that reduces the compaction on the soil. So we would take that near those trees and then remove those trees piece by piece. Is any wood that comes from the trees will not leave the site, we will chip it and use the. Either for mulch or wood chip, wood chip for pathways. If there's any salvageable wood, we actually have a team of wood turners who come in. In October, and they can turn some of the wood into. Bowls or vases that we end up using as fundraising opportunities. The stumps are gonna be left, we are not going to remove the the stumps because we do not wanna damage. Or disturb the soil. And there will be no disturbance in the resource area, that when the trees are dropped, we will make sure that the wood. Falls away from Bussy Brook in each case. And we wanted to review this with you, we sent it to Elena first, and she suggested this go for executive review. And now Rachel and I are available for any questions you might have.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Rodney. I don't have any questions. Elena, did you have any context here?
Yeah, so just to sort of reiterate what Rodney already shared, the the reason that I wanted to bring this to the commission instead of. Giving them a yes or no answer without checking in is because this sort of, the work falls into a bit of a gray area, but it. Is limited in scope enough to where I I don't know that. Our initial reaction was not to necessarily require them to buy one, that's why I wanted to bring it to the commission to see if. There's perhaps an administrative approval that we could issue, and if so, if there are any conditions that the commission would want to see attached to that.
Oh, what gray area? What what do you mean?
Uh, I I think I was mostly thinking that because like Vista pruning, for example, is explicitly exempt in the regs, but. This goes, this doesn't fall exactly within the Vista pruning category, and that was why I I wanted to sort of. Bring it to you to make sure that this was something that the commission will be comfortable with under an admin approval.
Okay, what resource areas would the trees be in? I didn't I didn't catch that.
Um, let's see. Apologies, I'm just pulling up the initial email thread here.
It'll be, I don't know exactly, but maybe the fifty foot buffer zone.
Would be twenty five riverfront, twenty five waterfront for fifty feet?
Maybe a hundred foot to the bank.
Yeah, that's what it feels like, right?
Yes, so. I believe that these were all within the hundred foot buffer to bank, and then again, the question is just that because the work goes beyond pruning. If this is something that commission would be comfortable with as an admin approval.
Yeah, I certainly am. So let me go around the, let me go around here. Commissioner Herbst, I'll start with you first. Probably more experienced with this.
Yeah, I I appreciate, Elena, you're bringing it to us, but I I would say. This does seem something that could be administratively approved without, in the future, I'd say, without needing to come before us, if you're comfortable with their. Methods. I would be fine with that.
That sounds good, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan and Condon, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, how how long have these things been dead? They look pretty dead to me.
Actually, John, just this year. Given the ongoing drought that we're facing at the end of the summers. And into early fall, these these three trees, actually, the. The red pine and the birch have been declining for years, and then this year they they died. The sour wood is enigmatic to us, it did, it just died. We're not sure exactly why, but it was all three this this summer.
Yeah. Chop chop them down, chop them down before they fall down, that's all.
I agree, and I agree with Commissioner Herbst as well. I am curious about the cause of that, but it seems like Rodney, you're not sure about. At least one of them, the sour wood.
Yeah, the sour wood, again, we we have all looked at it. Rachel, do you have any further assessment of why you think the sour sour wood just completely died?
Um, the sour wood, I really, I think it's it's a lot to do with the changes in moisture level. So, you know, like one year it's been really wet, the next year it's been really dry, just those extremes, it's not used to that. And then the red pines, Rodney kind of explained that was, it's more of a climate change. And there's in the with the warmer climate, there's a lot of more insects and boring beetles particularly. Pressure on that that tree.
Well, it seems like both causes are climate related, one is more chronic. And the other one is the variations are hard for extreme variations to the extremes are hard for trees to deal with. So just people often wonder what are, you know, how do we see concretely what is climate change doing to us? And you in your lives are seeing it right in front of your eyes, so. To the extent that can be documented, that'd be very helpful. Are these the only three trees? Are these the only three in close to the resource area? That are dying?
These are, these are the only three that we have, we have other trees we're continually removing, we have. And we have over sixteen thousand plants. These are the three that are most immediate, so we're we're continually removing trees, just. Others are outside of the resource area.
Right, thank you.
Okay, so Elena, I think you, I think you got your answer.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you, Rodney.
Thank you. Y'all have a good night.
You too. Okay, next administrative update, final conservation restriction for parcel eight.
Yes, and Alice Brown with the Environment Department is here to introduce the presentation, and then we have a few folks. Who will be actually giving the presentation.
Good evening, commissioners, and thank you for being here at eight o'clock. You've heard before that there has been a project in the works for over a decade now. That we have been previewing to over the last year because we've been working on a draft conservation restriction for a parcel of land. That would not normally be Conservation Commission jurisdiction, but for legislation has assigned it to become your. Conservation restriction to hold. So Yun is here from Boston Planning to give you an overview of the site to understand. What has happened over the last decade. And then in your folder for the next hearing will be the draft conservation restriction language that has been approved by the state. That you'll be voting on at the next hearing, but we wanted to be able to give you a presentation on the project tonight in case there are any further questions. That we can review before you're in a position to like read the legal language and vote next time, so. With that, I'll turn it over to Yun, and I think she's also joined by some folks from the development team in case you have really specific questions. But again, there are no wetland resources here, this is not a traditional. Project or even a very standard CR for a type of project like this. So, Yun.
Thank you, Alice. Good evening, commissioners, my name is Yun Chang, and I'm a Senior Real Estate Development Officer with the Boston Planning Department. And as Alice introduced, I'm here to provide some context. And background on the conservation restriction related to a project known as parcel eight in Roxbury. So like Alice introduced, this CR will come before you for a vote at your next hearing in September nineteenth. And with that being said, I think there's enough context on the background, so maybe on the next slide. So a bit of a history lesson, as Alice mentioned, this project has been in the works for over a decade. This all stems from a twenty fourteen Massachusetts Legislative Act. That laid out how a state-owned land at parcel eight in Roxbury is to be redeveloped through a city-led process. So this very legislation required that a part of the site become a public park. Which would be permanently protected to through a conservation restriction and the preservation restriction. With the Conservation Commission designated as the CR holder. Next slide, please. So following the twenty fourteen legislation, the BPDA issued the RFP and designated Nubai LLC as a developer. Nubai is represented here tonight by some members of their partner organization, Urbanica, and their consultants. The project received Article eighty approval in twenty twenty two. And many of you may recall that staff from the Environment Department, including Alice and her team. Have worked very closely with us over the past year to negotiate the conservation restriction language with the state. So at this point, the conservation restriction is in its final and complete form. The only action before you is to vote on signing the CR at your the next meeting on the nineteenth. So the presentation tonight is simply to provide some background and context on the project prior to this vote. So on the next slide. The redevelopment of parcel eight involves actually two parcels. One state-owned parcel governed by the twenty fourteen legislation in the first slide. And a smaller city-owned parcel controlled by the Mayor's Office of Housing. So together, these two parcels will support two mixed-use buildings with affordable and rental homeownership units. And a new public park at the corner of Melnea Cass and Washington Street. So that park is the land that will be permanently protected by the conservation restriction, you see that kind of on the page right of the rendering here. Uh, next slide, please. Here is more of a technical boundary map of the project, so the overall project area for parcel eight is in blue. And the area of the park and conservation restriction is highlighted in the red. And on the next slide. So currently, this site is more or less a gravel lot that was licensed for parking, like truck parking until very recently. Again, it's not the type of natural resource area that would typically be associated with a conservation restriction. But the legislation requires this CR, so here we are, following that mandate. Next slide, please. And again, this is a rendering of the project from the corner of Melnea Cass and Washington Street with the park area in the foreground. And on the next slide, we have some information and some additional close-up renderings. And then on the next slide. Here is a plan of the park with some of the material palettes. And a planting schedule. On the following slide, so all of these designs. Have been reviewed and approved by the Parks Department, Landmarks Commission, and DCR and MHC. And next slide, please. So again, that's, this is the planting schedule, we'd be happy to come back to these details if the commissioners. Would like to, and to close, I'll close on the next slide here. To just give you an idea what's ahead. So tonight was an informational presentation on the background of the parcel eight project and the associated conservation restriction. On September nineteenth, the CR will be brought to this commission again for a vote to sign. And in October later this year, the CR should be executed along with other conveyance documents. When the project financing closes and the state land is transferred to the developer. So with that, I'm happy to conclude. Thank you for your time, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. So a quick question, who's responsible for maintenance and upkeep here?
Yes, the developer is responsible for maintenance and ongoing upkeep of the of the building and the park area.
Okay, where is that in the conservation restriction? I'm looking through it. I'm not finding it, but I'm looking quickly.
And let me pull up that document. Alice, do you have that off the top of your head?
Well, we're not gonna vote on it until the next hearing, so I can find it. And see what it says. Okay, as far as the landscaping. How was the landscaping determined? Alice, was that thing that we had input into?
It's been primarily DCR and parks, but I think two things to keep in mind, one is that. The preservation restriction is really focused on ensuring that should archaeological resources need to be further researched. In that area, there not be a lot of paving, which is why it's primarily like pavers on the path. And a lot of sort of like meadow-like conditions such that if archaeological research needed to be done, it could be done more easily than if it was covered with. Concrete or asphalt. So that I think sort of works in our favor that the preservation restriction and the conservation restriction are so well aligned. And then DCR and parks along the way have done their best to ensure that there are sort of native species, and while it's not gonna be a. You know, fourteenth century landscape for the corner of Melnea Cass and Washington Street, it's certainly an ecologically rich. One that would reflect native species.
Okay, okay, I don't see mention of the preservation restriction in the conservation restriction, is there another document I'm missing or?
There is a separate preservation restriction that the Massachusetts Historic Mission is signing as well.
Okay.
That is, has been co-created in parallel to the document that you'll be signing.
Okay, so the way this works is the developer. The developer is responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of this parcel. And who ensures compliance? Is it Elena going out here on a site visit or?
Sorry. Excuse me, Commissioner. So in terms of the compliance, it will be, so there is, because this. The structure of this project is involves a affordable housing, so this project is receiving funds from. Both state and the city for the creation of the affordable rental and the affordable condos. So there's three, there's a couple of research layers of protections here. So the first protection is the preservation restriction, which lives in the deed. So this is part of a deed restriction, so that's one layer. Another layer is the land disposition agreement, so BPDA. Is acting sort of as a pastor entity to kind of administer these transactions. So as part of that, when the land is going from the states to the developer. There will be an additional document called the land disposition agreement that will further require that the developer. Adhere to the requirements of the preservation and the conservation restriction, including the maintenance of the park. And then the third layer is the financing because. You know, this project is receiving public funds, there are performance requirements associated with the financing. That will require the developer to adhere to the maintenance requirements of this project.
Okay, understood. Okay, final question from me, if someone slips and falls on this property. Who who gets the complaint?
I believe that should be the developer, well, depends on which time, but at the time of, so currently, the it should be. The complaint should go to DCR. At the time of the disposition, we hope, we are actually sequencing the signing of the conveyance. To be simultaneous, so the land will go from DCR to BRA to it's the developer. All in one, it will be all recorded at the same time at the registry of deeds. So at that point, all viability would go to the developer.
Okay, so we might be on the hook for. Okay, so we might be on the hook for one second, is what you're saying.
Uh. No, not really, even, because I think what will happen is we'll we'll have um. Cause there's a series of documents that need to be signed and recorded altogether, so we're guessing, oh, we'll have them um signed and. Um, you know, put in escrow and then they'll all record it at the same time, uh the registry of deeds.
Yeah, no, I was being glib, there's obviously one second uh lag between when one thing gets recorded and the next, so that's good. Okay, that that works, okay, uh Eleanor, uh do you have anything on this?
Apologies, I um muted and then unmuted again, um but no, I didn't have anything to add on this, um I think that, yeah, if we have any additional. Updates, we can share those at the next hearing, but again, I think um hopefully with this presentation, any outstanding questions would be answered, and then. At the next hearing, the um vote can be relatively straightforward.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Sullivan?
Are there any private or public utilities that traverse the site that is going to be restricted?
I might have to revert um refer to the project team here, I think Mr. Malonowski is here to.
Yes.
Yes.
Hi you, excuse me, um members of the commission, Michael Malonowski with Allen, a major associate. Um, there, through the park itself, um the only utilities are for some. Pedestrian-style bollard lights, which would be tied back to the um the main building. Um that's it for utilities in that area, there's no public water or sewer or anything that comes through that area. Everything is sort of um circumvented around those areas, and that's partly due to the fact of the presence of. Archaeologically sensitive areas, um we've worked. Long and hard with DCR and city archaeologists to make sure that our. Disturbances don't exceed thirty-six inches um below the existing ground. Um so that we're not impacting any of those items below grade.
So if there are any archaeological's hidden gems hidden underneath that, we'll never know because we can't dig it.
Well, there's, there's been extensive exploration already, that's how come we know that there's stuff there. Part of our ongoing process with DCR and parks is. Making sure that we have notes on our drawings that there are some areas that will need to be monitored by. A um an archaeologist, um while they're digging to make sure that there, we don't hit anything.
Yeah, yeah, that's all I had.
Okay.
Commissioner Khan? There is no one eight-hundred dig save for archaeologists, I guess. Um, that, so is the CR applicable in perpetuity?
Yes.
I appreciate that the the larger font um there, but it just didn't mention the perpetuity part, where is it?
It operates by uh matter of law.
And it'll be in the CR itself.
Uh, I think it's on the. First. Um, on their purpose on the first page, or sorry, second page, it will be retained in perpetuity.
Yeah, the only way this can get hoped is uh it's pursuant to Article ninety-seven. Uh, to the Massachusetts Constitution, so it would take a two-thirds vote of legislature to um. Revert this park land to something else.
Great, thank you.
Sure. That was it?
That was it.
Okay, sorry, uh Commissioner Herbst?
I'm sure in the end Chair Parker will make sure this all makes sense, but uh if the developer moves along, you know, moves along. How does that work? Cause they don't own the property, right? Or do they?
Uh, so they do, so actually because this is a um. Homeownership and a condo property, uh so the condo portion will continue to be owned by the developer. Um and the uh, sorry, the other way around, the um. Rental property will be continued to be owned and um by the developer, uh on the other side, the um. The condos, so um so the developer will be the uh one of, I believe, the partners or the. Appointed board member of the condo association uh for, I believe it's the first three years. Um and helps the condo association, um you know, get started and figure out how to maintain and manage the park. Uh along with the um, the rental part of the property. Um. So that that is sort of like, um, you know, the developer will continue to be um engaged, at least in the beginning. Um wholly, and then um once the condo association established and self-reliant, um they will be working in. Partnership with the um rental property management.
Yeah, and I would add, uh Commissioner Herbst, maybe more pointedly to your question, uh this travels with the land, so any successor. Um it's in the chain of title is has the same obligations.
Okay, I just. Sound, I I don't, so it can't be abandoned at some point saying, hey, we're not interested in the park, we're maintaining it.
Yep.
Yes, as long as someone owns the park or is the land, yes.
Okay, thank you, I know you'd handle it, Chair Parker.
Okay, thank you. If it's something really boring and mind-numbing, uh I've got your answer. Okay, um, I think that's it, so uh thank you to everyone for all the hard work. And uh we'll see you in two weeks. Maybe we'll see you, but we'll see this for a for a vote in two weeks.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, next item, administrative updates, um Eleanor, this is the New England Aquarium response.
Yes, so um during uh our July twenty-third hearing, the commission had some questions about how. The proposed steam line um in going in near the New England Aquarium was going to fit in with the Brazilians planning for that area. So um they had gotten back to us uh and had just shared some insights on that as well as just noting that they they do have a plan to close out the open. Um orders of conditions and and file for COCs for those projects. Uh so I just wanted to share that letter with the commission, and if anybody has any follow-up questions for the aquarium, I'm happy to get those over to their team.
I don't, anybody else? Okay, hearing done, uh Longfellow Bridge Vegetation Management.
Yes, so this was the last admin update that we have for tonight, um for this, we had received an inquiry from um Mast dot. Because they were pla- or are planning to do vegetation management in an area that uh required them to get either an order of conditions. Or uh sign off in some capacity from the Conservation Commission. Uh I coordinated with the uh Cambridge Conservation Agent because they're planning on doing this vegetation management on both sides of the bridge. And the area in which the vegetation management is proposed is not jurisdictional to the Conservation Commission. So um instead, I drafted a letter um expressing support for the project and uh just noting some. Uh parameters on how the herbicide would be used, um and the fact that there should be a revegetation plan. Um but given that it was um outside of the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction, I felt like that was probably the best way to uh. I guess move this forward, but if any commissioners have any questions, I'm happy to answer those or look into the questions and get back to you.
I'm good, anybody else?
Nope.
No, sounds, thank you Eleanor.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, uh so that leaves us with the acceptance of the meeting minutes, I reviewed both of them, made some very minor changes, they're very well done. Uh so I would entertain a motion to accept the meeting minutes from July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five and August sixth, twenty-twenty-five.
Chair Parker, I wasn't present for the third set, I think, August twentieth.
Yeah, I didn't look over those.
Oh, alright, sorry, I missed it.
Yeah, twenty-third and twenty-fifth, I know that thirtieth is um. On the agenda here, but I did not see those, so I think you're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So moved then.
You have a second. Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Conant?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries for nothing, okay, uh again, thank you to staff uh for doing all the great things that you do. Putting together another large hearing for us, um if you somehow arrange to make it a little little lighter in the future, we'd appreciate it, but. No, it's not. Thank you for all your efforts, uh and uh does anybody object to adjourning, adjourning?
I'm being.
Thank you for participation and Commissioner Herbst, have a great time in Hawaii.
Thank you, see y'all in a month.
Thank you all.
Bye everyone.
Good night.